All right, welcome to those that have joined us here in council chambers. Sorry I'm a minute or so late getting here, but if we can all please rise, I'll lead you in the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and for the many blessings we have received in our city. As we move forward on the various issues this evening, guide us. As we serve the community in the coming days, strengthen us to do what is right, and Lord, we especially ask that we stay mindful of those in need. Tonight again, we ask for your blessing and presence, that it be felt by those who serve our country, as well as our public safety employees who serve our nation, state, and city. Guide and protect them and bring comfort to their families as they protect all of us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First item this evening is a special presentation. This is the introduction of new employees. Mr. Wheeler.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of the community. At your last meeting, we had the occasion to introduce to you and recognize a number of individuals in fire department that had been recently promoted, as well as one new employee. And this evening, we will complete the set of the promotions that really were a byproduct of some other retirements that we had at the end of the year and early this year. Our newest, I will say they happened pretty much at the same time, but to complete the set of our newest battalion chiefs is Skippy Smith. Come forward, please, sir.
I'm a member of the city council, I'm better known as Skippy, and like, thank you for this opportunity and hope I can do a very good job.
So Skip, let me say congratulations, well deserved, and what a pleasure it is to have you on our fire department, and I mean that sincerely from the heart. Because I will tell you that you're one of the most caring people that I know, and when you arrive on scene, the one thing I've always noticed is your demeanor with our citizens. And we really appreciate that, it makes them feel like they're cared for, and I just hope that in this new position, as you're mentoring others, that you get that point across to them. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Stay right there. Stay right there. Next up is Lieutenant Tom Canela.
Good evening, my name's Tom Canela. Thank you for having me here today, and been with the city a long time. I want to thank some very special people, my wife, my children, my son who's sitting here, city councilman, very important, and our city manager and our fire chief and deputy chief for affording me this opportunity, and look forward to serving the city in my new capacity.
Hey, we look forward, Tom, to serving with you many years in the future, and same applies. You've been a great city employee for a lot of times with a lot of background.
Yes, sir.
And we hope that you will mentor others with that knowledge, okay? Because we've got a lot of young people coming up. So really thank you for what you're about to do.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, our last promoted individual to master firefighter is Chris Tantillo.
Just want to say, I appreciate the opportunity that the city has given me, especially with the promotion. Had a lot of great mentors along the way, and I've got many a year now with this guy above me. It's going to be a fun time.
Oh, yes. And we, again, same thing. Welcome, thanks for your service, thanks for what you do, and I'm sorry for what you're going to have to put up with in senior leadership, okay?
I've been with him for over 10 years now.
Okay, you know what to expect.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. All right, they'll talk to you later.
And, sir, last but not least, it is a pleasure to introduce our newest employee, also with the fire department, Elijah Rossi.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it. I've spent the past five years working for the city of Hampton, 15-year resident of Pecosin, so I'm a move-in, but, you know, just excited about the opportunity to serve the community in a greater capacity, so looking forward to it.
Welcome.
Thanks for having me.
You know, sorry about that other service that you had to put up with, but glad that you came to the right side 15 years ago.
That's right, makes it that much sweeter.
So, thanks. Thank you so much. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, and next item on the agenda is an audience for visitors, and this is if somebody in council would like, in council chambers, would like to address council on some issue that is not one of the public hearings that we have this evening. So we have three public hearings scheduled, two on sale of properties and one on the sign ordinance. So if you want to talk about any of those, just withhold your comment for a second. Yes, sir?
Hello, hello, I'm Bruce McEwen, I'm representing Pecosin Family Medicine, Pecosin Pediatrics, Pecosin Chiropractic Clinic. First, I'd just like to thank the mayor and all the city council, the EDA and city manager for your valuable role in helping to bring medical services here into Pecosin. I really do appreciate your assistance and leadership in that. I just want to take a quick moment to update you on some of the really exciting things that are happening at Family Medicine and Pediatrics there. First, the small stuff, we are renovating the exterior of the building over there on With Creek Road. If you've driven by there, you've probably seen a lot of the wood has been replaced, and we're just waiting on a good spell of weather, and we're going to have a really nice, deep, tanned, classy paint on there with some white and black trim. It's going to look really appealing from the road. So we're excited about how that exterior renovation to match that recent interior renovation we did. Next, exciting, we're in negotiation with the property owners that are next to us to expand our space and our footprint, buy out some of the more of the building that where we are right now. We're looking to add more treatment rooms and a larger in-house laboratory, which we'll think will be a big benefit for the residents and our patients. But that's really, and a lot of times that might be considered a pretty big announcement, but bigger announcement really is that we have expanded our leadership. I just want to say that any small businessman or business owner who's trying to thrive in an environment with the Walmarts and the Targets and the Costcos of the world know it's difficult in that environment, and so similar for a small hometown, you know, independent, multidisciplinary medical practice in this sea of riversides and Centerra's and TPMGs. But where we really feel that we can add to, in addition to providing quality medicine, is really in that delivering that lost art of the hometown touch. And that's really where we think we can stake our claim and stand out. So we made a major step in that endeavor recently with the hiring of a brand-new leadership and new team of medical providers to run family medicine. And so that's right when I said plural, I'm excited to announce that we now are offering the specialty of internal medicine, applicable to family medicine. Dr. Sid Kana is specialized in internal medicine, and I'm here to introduce you to Tony Colton, who is an advanced nurse practitioner, board certified in family medicine, running family medicine. Dr. Sid will look to attend a future council meeting, but I brought Tony here to proudly introduce you. Tony's been in the healthcare field for over 18 years and provides comprehensive care, healthcare with the emphasis on disease prevention, diet and exercise. She lives right here in Pecosin, which is really important. She really relishes this opportunity to serve her own community, much like a lot of these firemen that I've known for so long have worked in this community and served for so long and really take pride in that, and I think adds to the value of the service they offer. That's what Tony is going to bring to the table. And you have my guarantee that she's already providing care that is consistent with our mission statement of modern medicine with the hometown touch. So without further ado, I just wanted to introduce Pecosin Family Medicine's new provider and leader, Tony Colton.
Welcome, Tony.
Thank you, thank you. I've been at the family practice for just a little over 30 weeks now, and I've gotten to know a lot of people and patients in the community, and it's been a privilege to be able to not have to commute outside of my community and treat my patients and see them in the grocery store and see them here and there. It's really been an honor, it really has been. The people of Pecosin are great. It's a really great, great city. I love being here, we've been here for five years. We've made a lot of improvements in the family practice, and we're looking toward a lot more improvements as well.
Excellent. I will tell you that this is one of the things that council felt very strongly about was medical service provider here in our city, and thank you for filling that void that we had for so long.
Thank you.
And thank you for that continuous improvement. You want to improve it and get better and better, and we appreciate everything that you're doing.
I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thanks for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Bruce, you used the acronym CPMD.
TP.
I don't know what that is.
What's that?
That.
TPMD.
TMD.
I was talking about TPMD, which is a local multi-position group. So when you're a little small minnow in a big C, it's a little challenging.
Yeah, I just didn't understand the acronym.
That was my fault. But we're going to stand on superior service, and that's what's going to set us apart.
All right.
Superior performance.
Thank you. Anybody else? Audience for visitors. Okay, if not, I'll close the audience for visitors and ask council for approval of the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of our regular session of January 22nd, 2018.
Second. Okay, motion made, and second, that we approve the minutes of the regular session of January 22nd, 2018. Questions or comments?
Aye.
Councilman Canela.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you very much. Now we're at the section of the agenda for public hearings. We have three of these this evening. The first one, we're going to have to take them in order. The first one is receipt of bids for the sale of publicly-owned property located at Moore Road.
Mr. Mayor, we have received two bids on this particular property, right? Maybe we didn't get any between 4:30 and 7 o'clock, right? So the procedure is that at this time, Evie, in her capacity of clerk, will open the sealed bids, she will read each one. Once she's done that, it has been our practice to immediately move to public hearing, to allow any person, including the persons that put in a bid, to speak on this issue, and then following the completion of the public hearing, council has a discretion to either make a decision today, postpone that decision, and in making a decision, you have broad latitude. It's not a thing where you are required to accept a bid or anything like that.
Agreed. Okay, can you open the bids, please?
We, Teresa and Dean Lowry, 31 Moore Road, Pecosin, Virginia, do hereby submit our offer to purchase the 15-foot strip of city-owned property running from Moore Road to the right rear property line of property on pasture road. Tax map parcel number 12-1-4A. Our bid is $1,300. We are requesting city council's permission to purchase the small parcel that we have been maintaining for the 20 years we have lived at 31 Moore Road. We have no plans to develop it. Our only wish is to purchase the property to preserve it as it is. Your consideration in this request is greatly appreciated. Respectfully submitted, Dean and Teresa Lowry. The second and final bid. The Honorable W. Eugene Hunt Jr., Mayor, City of Pecosin. The Honorable J. Randolph Wheeler, City Manager, City of Pecosin. Members of City Council, City of Pecosin, regarding tax map parcel number 12-1-4A. Dear Mayor, Members of City Council and City Manager, in response to the attached public notice with regards to tax map parcel 12-1-4A, my wife and I bid $2,000, with the city retaining a maintenance and drainage easement. This sealed bid was delivered this 12th day of February 2018 to the Pecosin City Manager's office. Very truly yours, Thomas A. Burcher, Deborah H. Burcher.
Okay, thank you very much. So we have two bids, and we're going to open the public hearing on those bids, and if you're in the audience this evening and one of those bids is yours, you're welcome to speak. All right, so I'm going to open this public hearing and ask for those that want to speak to council at this time. All right, Dean?
Dean Lowry, 31 Moore Road, Pecosin. I've lived on Moore Road for the past 57 years. I've lived at this address which borders the property in question for the last 20. Frankly, did not know that it wasn't part of the property. That's been family-owned property for the last, I don't know, goes back to 1900s, early 1900s, but that parcel was split up at some point in the early, late 50s, early 60s, and that separate parcel was spread out. The dividing line has always naturally been the ditch that the city maintains between 17 Moore Road and 31 Moore Road. So we've been maintaining up to that ditch since we moved in in 1998 to that address. So the idea was, well, we've been maintaining it, we'd like the option to be able to buy it and preserve it, because we've considered that, you know, part of that parcel. So that was all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask council how they'd like to proceed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we adopt an ordinance to the City of Pecosin, Virginia, granting the purchase of publicly-owned property located at Moore Road, that the bid of $2,000 for the purchase of property located on Moore Road is hereby accepted, and that Thomas and Deborah Burcher shall be granted the purchase of publicly-owned property located at Moore Road for the amount of $2,000. That Thomas and Deborah Burcher shall reimburse the City of Pecosin the full amount of expenses incurred in giving public notice of the proposed purchase of the subject property.
Second. Okay, motion made, and second, that we accept one of those two bids, and questions or comments of council?
Adieu, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go right ahead.
It's my understanding when we put this property up for sale, it was under the condition that it could not be used for access or egress from the property back behind it, is that correct?
The ad, Mr. Southall.
That'd be good.
Right behind it articulates the retaining of a maintenance and drainage easement, and that's the only condition that was articulated.
Okay, so by maintaining the condition of the drainage ditch, will that allow a pipe to be put in and then a road on top of it?
Not sure.
Okay, I have concerns if that can be turned into an access or egress, making, dividing those properties with a small private road, and so I will take that into consideration for my vote.
Okay.
Does it say where the Burchers live in relation to the property? I didn't hear an address for that.
Is there an address on the letter?
I'll be glad to answer that question for you. 15 lots of these grounds, Pecosin, Virginia, right down by the river.
Okay, so the Lowries live next to the property, and the Burchers do not.
Right, that's correct.
I am the adjoining property man. I own the adjoining property, five-plus acre.
Since that couldn't be heard, that was the, you want to go ahead and repeat that?
Mr. Burcher indicated to the council that he is an adjoining property, only he owns the property behind this, which is approximately five acres. Mr. Burcher?
Remaining parts.
Remaining parts.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I was under the impression that we are under no obligation to make a decision tonight.
That is one course of action, however, the motion on the table, and second, it is that we vote to approve.
I'm not comfortable doing it tonight.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I think, didn't we have some correspond, Randy, didn't we have some correspondence from Mr. Burcher that said that he had no intention of using that as an ingress/egress?
That is correct, that we had previously received that, however, what matters for the purposes of this bid is what is specifically articulated in his bid. Mr. Burcher may want to wish to address that. If he makes a representation to you that further qualifies his bid, you can condition your potential acceptance based on that, should you wish.
May I approach, counsel? Yes, sir.
The use of that parcel is not for ingress and egress, not at this time, not planning to do it. Extra work I don't need to do. I just want to buy the parcel as it abuts my property.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can we then make that a condition of our approval for this sale?
Defer to your attorney.
You did not advertise it that way. My impression of how that is, if Mr. Burcher is making that as a proffer, then I think you can accept it and then your motion. If he's not making that as a proffer, then he answered nothing. I did not interpret what Mr. Burcher said, that it was a proffer of a prior condition. He said not at this time. Didn't have to stand in front of me right now. It has not been offered, that it would not be used for a right-of-way.
I'll make it clear.
I'll make it clear. If Mr. Moore puts it in the contract, I'll work with Mr. Moore to put it in the contract. I have no objection to, it's a drainage and utility easement. Its future use is great for the area. I've offered proffered to the city, as part and parcel of me working with the city, other drainage and utility easements in that area, because I know the necessity of it in that area. They don't exist, and they need to be there. We've got Mr. Carmine's property back there, we need this very much for the access to utilities for everybody, not just me. Thank you.
So let me, so let me make sure I understand, so this council will finally make a motion based on that.
I understand.
Will modify the motion. So basically, what you are, what you are representing to us today is that you want to use it for utility and easement access only at this time?
Yes, sir, and like I said.
In any future.
I don't, I don't want to spend any more money on that piece of property than I have to.
Yes, sir, I'm familiar with the property, so.
And my recognition is, you amend your motion to accept it, that you will accept that bid, but you would require that there be no, that the deed have a limit, no limit the deed would provide, that it could not be used for egress or egress.
I'm in my motion as to what he said. I'm not going to try to say that again.
And is there a second?
Second.
He's the second or the.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to accept a second bid, that the stipulation be placed on the bid, that it is for utility easement, no ingress or egress only, is my understanding. Okay? Counsel, y'all, straight on what you're about to vote on.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Evie, please.
Mr. Mayor, do we have a chance?
Do we have a chance to speak to this again, since we have an amended?
Sure.
Motion?
Sure.
At this time, as we sit, this is not in writing, is it? I understand what the discussion is.
It's going to be in writing. It's going to be in writing, once you make this motion.
Once you make, it's official, once.
Then it will be part of the deed of transfer. There will be a limit in the deed transferring the property to Mr. Burcher.
Very good, thank you. That's one thing, that why we have the city clerk and the city attorney, is to make sure that whatever we pass here at this table is recorded. All right, any other questions or comments? Sale of property is always so fun. All right, Evie, please.
Councilman Canela.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried, a vote for seven to zero.
Okay, thank you very much, and now we get to do this again. All right, this is a receipt of bids for the sale of publicly-owned property located at Pecosin Avenue and Cedar Road. Would you open the bids, please?
Certainly, we have one bid. Excuse me. Dear councilors, my company, MCR Properties, is interested in purchasing a 1,500-square-foot parcel of land from the city of Pecosin, located in an existing city right-of-way at the corner of Cedar Road and Pecosin Avenue. MCR Properties has been under contract to buy two parcels of vacant land on the same corner. We plan to build two single-family homes on the properties and thus increase Pecosin's real estate tax revenue. The cumulative total land area that we had under contract is approximately 38,500 square feet. Due to the zoning ordinance, we would need an additional 1,500 square feet, more or less, in order to adjust the boundary line between the parcels and be approved to build the two homes. As such, we would like to purchase approximately 1,500 square feet from the city right-of-way located at that corner. At present, our contract to purchase the 38,500 square feet is expired, but I am told by the seller's agent that with your approval of this offer to purchase the additional 1,500 square feet, that the sellers would likely be willing to reinstate the contract. It is my understanding that Pecosin is in the planning stage for a sidewalk which will connect the high school and middle school. An easement on both the 1,500-square-foot parcel and the 38,500-square-foot parcel would enable your city to build a sidewalk a safe distance from two busy roads. As part of the inducement to the city to enter into this transaction, we will be willing to provide whatever assistance and easement conveyances are necessary to facilitate the project. I have included two attachments to help you visualize what we are proposing. The first is a preliminary survey of the parcels we have under contract to purchase. The second is an aerial view of the property, showing both parcels we intend to purchase, the right-of-way in question, the approximate location of the homes we wish to build, the 1,500-square-foot of land we wish to buy from the city, and the easements we would be willing to grant. As a consideration for the purchase of the 1,500 square feet, MCR Properties is offering $1,000 cash in hand, reimbursement to the city for the costs of advertising this sale, any easements necessary for the new sidewalk to be built. Please let me know if you have any questions or need any further information to begin consideration of this proposal. For the record, MCR Properties has built five homes in the city of Pecosin over the past two years. The continued relationship will help the city of Pecosin, the residents, and MCR Properties. Sincerely yours, Mike Veraldi, Manager, MCR Properties LLC. And there are two attachments.
Okay, would you pass those attachments down, just make sure all councils get to see this. All right, with that receipt of a bid, I'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to discuss this issue, including the bidder, if he's here. Yes, sir?
Counselors, I'm Mike Veraldi, I am the bidder. My bid, I think, says it all, but if you have any questions, I'm available.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, I notice it's making its way down still. Is anybody prepared to make a motion on this, or what's the desire of council?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance of the city of Pecosin, Virginia, granting the purchase of publicly-owned property located at Pecosin Avenue, Cedar Road, that the bid of $1,000 for the purchase of the property located within the city right-of-way at the corner of Cedar Road and Pecosin Avenue is hereby accepted, that MCR Properties shall be granted the purchase of publicly-owned property located in the city's right-of-way at the corner of Cedar Road and Pecosin Avenue for the amount of $1,000, that MCR Properties shall reimburse the city of Pecosin the full amount of expenses incurred in giving public notice of the proposed purchase of the subject property. notice of the proposed purchase of the subject property.
Second.
A motion made and seconded, we accept the bid.
Motion made and accepted, that we accept the bid and move forward with the purchase.
May I point out that that motion does not address the proposed indication for the location of sidewalk easements. In other words, his bid, his bid goes beyond the advertisement, so your motion does not include their granting of an easement on their property, nor the location of an easement on the property that you proposed to sell.
Mr. Mayor, I'm in.
So if you want to include that--
Yeah, I'm in my motion.
My suggestion would be under Section 4 of the ordinance, where you grant the city manager the authority to proceed, that you would add to include the location of sidewalk easements to the approval of the city manager.
Okay, and I have a question about that, because--
All right, hold on one second. Let's see if we've got a motion made and seconded.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I move that I amend my motion to include under Section 4, that the city manager shall include the sidewalk easements in the sale of this property.
Second.
Okay. So we now have a proper motion in front of us, and Bud?
Yes. The drawing that was supplied shows sidewalk easements across existing property, but it does not show the sidewalk easements going through the property being purchased. We're talking about that going through the property that's being purchased. Is that not correct?
My intention was that if it meets the satisfaction, the city manager would be on both parcels. Doesn't necessarily say it's shown on that.
Yeah, we're not necessarily following the sketch.
Okay. All right.
Agreed. And the sidewalk would indeed be contiguous across all parcels.
Okay. Bye.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. E.V., please.
Certainly. Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
No.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Canelo.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried with a vote of six to one.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. The next public hearing on the agenda this evening is a proposed amendment to Section 3, Tac Delta, Tac 4 of the sign ordinance to allow electronic signs in commercial districts and commercial uses in other districts, and commercial uses in other districts. So I know there's a short presentation this evening.
Mr. Mayor, given the very small nature of the change, we've decided to spare you the PowerPoint, but we're prepared to talk about it at length. Counsel will recall, at your November meeting, I brought back an item which was really a follow-up from a council discussion in October, and the essential element there was, as you will remember, some time ago, I can't remember, 2014, the city approved the current language pertaining to electronic signs, the most pertinent part of which for this evening is it was reserved exclusively for city and school use only. And at that time, the council asked that it be brought back at some future date to determine whether or not it would be appropriate to make that general provision, or make that provision available generally, rather than specifically and only for the governmental uses. There was delay in bringing that back, in part because the sign didn't, the one sign that we did have didn't go up quite as quickly as was envisioned, but in October, you talked about it, we brought it back, and at your direction, we sent back to the Planning Commission an amended version, and it's, I'll read it for those people at home, it's very short. It is the beginning of Section 3D4 of the sign ordinance, which is found in Appendix D of the zoning ordinance. Electronic message signs, this is the original version, and then I'll say what the proposed change is. Electronic message signs. Electronic message signs are permitted for use by the city of Pacosa and/or the city's school system only. Such signs shall comply with the following standards, and there is a list of standards that goes on beyond one page that specifies things like illumination and how quickly a message can change and things like that. The proposed change that you sent back to the Planning Commission strikes from that sentence, two sentences that I read. I'll read the pertinent part of the first sentence. Electronic message signs are permitted for use, period. The words to be struck with the revision are "by" the city of Pacosa and/or the city's school system only, and this is in the section for reference, "commercial districts and commercial uses in other districts." It went to the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission heard it, as you see reflected in the staff report, Paragraph 3. After deliberation, the Planning Commission recommended denial of the amendment by a vote of six to zero. Danan O'Connell is here, and also Wally Horton, should you have questions for them, as they, Danan staffed the item at the Planning Commission, and Wally, as you know, is our community development director.
Very well. So this is a public hearing, and I'll open that public hearing to hear from citizens that are, that want to comment on the changes to the proposed sign ordinance. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for consideration by counsel.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance by revising Section 1-3 definitions.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded, that we adopt the ordinance allowing others to use the electronic signs in their, in the commercial corridor. Questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Can we get Danan to tell us why exactly Planning Commission voted unanimously to deny?
Let me speak from there, Dan.
From my memory, we had one person from the city, one resident, speak up against this proposal, stating that it was, signs were distracting and that they didn't want to see any kind of visual impairment along with Creek Road or any other area of the city. I believe the two main concerns voiced by the Planning Commission were that it could be a distraction, and it could be a negative aesthetic impact to our commercial areas. Those are the two main concerns.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments?
I don't think I was here during the discussion when that got put forward, so I'm really sympathetic to the fact that cities allow to do stuff that businesses can't, and there's some unfairness to that, but I'd prefer there be no light-up signs by the city either. I don't necessarily, I don't think the one, like, it's my personal opinion, in front of the middle school, looks very good in front of that really nice historic building, and I don't really understand the purpose of an electronic sign as opposed to another sign, other than it gets people's attention there, but when it comes to the schools, all that mess, all that information's being conveyed to the parents anyway, so I don't understand what information would be needed on an electronic sign, but I guess I sort of support the Planning Commission on this.
Okay, thank you.
Gene, I'd like to make a comment. I hate to see any law or ordinance that allows the government to do something that the population can't do, and I would like to know if there's any way to take this back and see if there's any kind of extra language that could be put into it so that its aesthetics for those signs would not be displeasing, but still have the opportunity for the public to do what the government can do.
Mr. Vice Mayor, you look like you're ready to make a comment.
Yes. I agree with Mr. Southall, but we've got two pages of things that we deny the public from doing anyhow, and there are lots of these things around. They're state-of-the-art in signage, anyway, and to deny our businesses from doing this, right now, they can put up a translucent board and go out and put black letters on in the middle of the rain, or wind, or whatever, and with an electronic sign which conveys approximately the same stuff, you can change it from your cellphone, as a, for instance, and I just think that we ought not to deny our businesses this opportunity. The manager and I were riding down, it was a Coliseum Boulevard, I believe, Monday or Tuesday.
I admit it, we left the city, but we came right back.
Oh, he did, but he was on very official business and came right back, I will add. But we counted, I counted at least 10 electronic signs in that little bit of distance from Centerra Hospital down to Mercury Boulevard. There were at least 10 electronic signs in that area, and I don't think they look bad. We have one at Hampton University at the Interestway, there's one at CNU, if people want to go look at, you know, electronic signage. I just think it's a good thing, and I don't think denying our businesses the use of this state-of-the-art thing is, should be.
Okay, thank you very much. Other comments?
I just, you know, after reading the ordinance we had, just for the ones used by the city and schools, I don't know what else we could add to it that would restrict these signs, because your brightness is addressed, how quickly it can change the message, all that kind of stuff, and, you know, I don't have any problem with it.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other comments? If not, I have just some overarching comments. I will tell you, the council has had this discussion, sometimes heated, in other venues, and what I would say to the citizens is that there's a host of things on here that are not mentioned. It's not just a wide-open allowance on electronic signs, but I'm going to read some of those, I'm going to read the pertinent ones, or tell you what is governed. You're governed by static messages. It's not going to be one of these rolling signs where the message is, where you have to read as you go. It's not allowed to scroll, travel, flash, spin, revolve, shake, do any of that stuff. The messages must be fixed and unchanged for a period of eight seconds or more, okay? So you're not, it's not just a Vegas strip with all these signs going by. The transition from one message shall be accomplished immediately with no fade, dissolve, scroll, or travel. Okay, so basically, one sign disappears, the next sign comes up. Electronic message shall be allowed as a freestanding sign only, and must meet all the provisions set forth of our current ordinance. Shall not be located 250 feet of a, of a single-family dwelling, okay? Kind of an important thing for those folks that live near a business thing. The illumination of the sign, and don't get me to tell you what a knit is, but you cannot exceed 1,400 knits or foot candles from sunrise to sunset, so we're basically telling you how bright the sign can be, okay? And in the event that the electronic message is placed within a flood zone, well, you have to meet the flood zone requirements, too, and they must be maintained in good repair, working order. So what I would say is that things that we take for granted these days, I'm going to take everybody to a Wawa station, okay? A Wawa station with this electronic gas price sign, okay, that just changes the sign from, I don't know, what's the price of gas today? $2.47 to $2.52, okay? Instead of that being on a freestanding sign or of a pole, like on some of our places here, they'll actually just be able to change that from indoors. And I would tell you that sign technology, as compared to what the vice mayor talked about, that freestanding sign with those bent letters, right, that are just kind of stamped on there, I think it's actually an improvement. So, you know, while I would like to see Pacosa stay exactly the way that it was, I would tell you that this is probably something that we allowed it for the city to do, or actually for the school, the first time, because we were unfamiliar with what they would look like. So we did that as a trial run. I think it was always our intent to, if the city can do it, others can do it. So it was a trial run, and so then we followed up on that commitment. So all we're doing here tonight, despite, you know, some of the revelations of my favorite news media source, which is Pacosa 411, that the council's just throwing us all to the wind, and that this is terrible and all that, it's very simply, let's come to the century of, that we are operating in. So with that said, I'm going to support this issue, and I'm ready to take a vote. So E.V.?
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Canelo.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried with a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Next item on the agenda is not a public hearing, and this is a budget transfer. It's a transfer of budget from within capital project funds for the City Hall Heating, Ventilation, and Air Conditioning Project, and is it broken?
Yes, sir. Yes, yes, sir, it is. Three of the eight units are down and may not be able to come back. They are well beyond their useful life, and as Tony will explain, this is the first, with your approval, the first step towards fixing them. It's not enough to fix them all, however, it is enough to fix the ones that are broken right now, and that would be a nice improvement.
As we talk about signs, we get signs every day as we walk in, both school boards,
city managers, and the finance department. That being that we're not sure what outfit to wear today, is it warm outside, cold outside, but we surely know what the temperature is inside.
Okay.
It spikes at 80. So my request is simple, we have $73,000 in undesignated capital project funds that I'd like to allocate to the HVAC to start fixing the units currently. So with your permission, I'd like the ordinance to be approved, and then we'll move forward with a contract to get it fixed.
Okay. Is there any questions, while she's here? Yes, Randy?
Tony, just for the people at home, how hot was it on your side of the complex today?
I topped at 81.
You topped at 81. It was very cold in my office, because I'd have the window open with a jacket on, because I have one of two windows in the building that will open.
Well, look, I've been on council since this building was, oh, well, that's 25 years. So you did nurse them alone for 25 years, so I'm good with that.
I should mention, school boards was at 82 or 83 today.
Okay. Well, that's because the vice mayor wanted to put some heat underneath the school board.
Fair enough.
All right. All right, so with that said, thank you, Tony, I'm sorry we're getting out of decorum here, but is there a motion to proceed with this item?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance allocating undesignated funds through additional appropriations and transfers for fiscal year 2017 and 18.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded, that we move $73,000 to help fix the air conditioning here in the City Hall, and I think that's money well spent. Questions or comments?
I have a comment. When we have some more money available, I would like first to look at the Parks and Recs building. That building has lots and lots of traffic in it as well.
I agree. And, but I do want to make sure that we all understand one thing, this is not the entire air conditioning bill, okay? This was for three of eight units, so I don't want everybody to leave here thinking, hey, we got it solved, okay? So please, please recognize that as we proceed. All right, E.V., please.
Certainly. Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Canelo.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you very much. And the last item on the agenda is a resolution making appointments to the Wetlands Board and Virginia Peninsula Public Service Authority Board, or VIPSA. Somebody prepared with a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution making appointments to the Wetlands Board and the Virginia Peninsula Public Service Authority Board with the following names inserted. One of our alternates, Craig Freeman, has expressed an interest in moving up to the board as a regular member. I move that Craig Freeman's name be inserted for the Wetlands Board, and his term will expire August 31, 2019, and for the Virginia Peninsula Public Service Authority Board, Ms. Bodina Wright.
Okay. We have a motion made, is there--
Second.
Motion made and seconded, that we nominate Ms. Bodina-- Motion made and seconded, that we nominate Ms. Bodina Wright and Mr. Freeman to the two boards mentioned. Questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, Evie, please.
Certainly. Councilman Canelle.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Abstain.
And the reason is?
The reason on Section 1 is it Mr. Freeman who is the alternate, isn't my son. On Section 2, I don't know if I can divide that up, I would...
You're good.
Vote for.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried at a vote of six to zero with one abstention.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, comments of the city manager?
Just one thing, I just want to say thank you to the council for approving that money to help us start earlier than we would have been able to otherwise, get these HVAC systems working there. You know, when we first started talking about this, when you all challenged us to move at best possible speed, we had one unit irreparably beyond repair, and that time, we've gone to three. We really have taken the 20-year units to 25-year plus and done what we can, in large measure because of work of Ann and other people that did it before her, but we are running out, so thank you for that, we sincerely appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Comments of council, we'll start with Councilman Hux down there this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no comment tonight.
Okay, Councilman Green.
Just one, Mr. Mayor, I would be supportive of if we don't come up with a quicker solution to dip into the unappropriated fund balance to get the rest of the air conditioners fixed. I think we're at that point.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilman Canelle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to congratulate those guys who were promoted from the firehouse tonight, especially my dad, and welcome our new employee, and wish luck to the Pecosin High School wrestling team, they're going to Salem this weekend for the state wrestling tournament.
Very well, thank you. Bud?
I'm just going to second the comments already made, thank you.
Nothing additional.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
And I have nothing addition.
Okay, thank you for all those comments. I will tell you, I received an interesting invite this evening, or actually just a week ago, and this is for the John T. Hannah Awards in 2017 honoring traffic, traffic safety excellence in Hampton Roads, and one of the award winners is Pecosin High School, their Arrive Alive Club, and the sponsor of that is Gloria Ensley. If at all possible, if it's not already going by, since I just got it, I will attend that for them, but what a great honor that is, and, because I will tell you that the other nominees on here are Columbia Gas of Virginia, Capital Concrete, Suffolk Police Department, the Norfolk Public Schools Transportation for Pupil Safety, Safety, I mean, Public Transportation Safety, Hampton Police Division, and Yellow Cab of Hampton for Public Transportation Safety, which I'm sure is a drunken driving thing, and then Pecosin High School's Arrive Alive Club, a club against all of that, what a great honor, and what a great lady and leader Gloria Ensley is down for us down there. So with that said, I have nothing else, and I'll take a motion to adjourn. So move, Mr. Mayor. Second. Okay, motion made and seconded to adjourn, I'm not going to ask them if they have a comment. Evie, please.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Canelle.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman. Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt, the motion carried with a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you very much, and we are adjourned.